We're going to call the Tuesday, October 6, 2015, Manseey City Council Meeting to Order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, can you please take the roll?
Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Cody?
Here.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Here.
Mayor Potem Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitless?
Here.
Councilmember Destin?
Here.
Intern City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
DPDW Director?
Here.
Public Safety Director?
Here.
And City Engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none since comment on agenda-related items. Does anyone in attendance who'd like to comment tonight's agenda? Please state your name and address first.
My name is John Brockwood, my address is 536 Eighth Street. And my comment is in regard to the proposed ordinance enacting the feeding ban regarding deer. I would like to commend the council for getting through Phase 1 with a unanimous vote. And I would encourage you to hold that course and approve the ordinance, the ban speeding of deer. It's essentially a consensus opinion that it's a necessary first step if we're going to have any hope of controlling deer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment tonight's agenda? Seeing now, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items march with an asterisk during the consent agenda considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: approval of minutes, approval payroll, cash balances report, consideration of ordinance 15-10 to prohibit the feeding of deer, wild turkeys, and other wild mammals, notification regarding next work session, and consideration of MSDDA, booze, brews, and brats 5K.
I'll make the motion with the council approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Councilmember Cody, supported by Councilmember Goodsky, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitless?
Yes.
Councilmember Destin?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes. Thank you. New business: consideration of amending a lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for telecommunication equipment at the Industrial Park Water Tower. The city currently leases space on and at the base of Industrial Park Water Tower to New Singular Wireless PSC LLC for telecommunication equipment. The lease expires May 31, 2016 unless renewed by the tenant. The tenant approached the city about modifying the lease earlier this summer. Request was to lower the annual rent by seven and a half percent and reduce the annual escalated from three percent to two and a half percent, as well as add two other minor provisions. In return, the city will receive a seven-year rent guarantee and reduce the likelihood of AT&amp;T relocating in the future. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the agreement. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Councilmember Cody, supported by Councilmember Zelinski, to approve the lease agreement. Is there any discussion?
Yes, can we have just about this explained a little bit more in detail?
The short version is really that we're trading off a slightly smaller income stream for a longer-term and more stable income stream. They do have some potential relocation possibilities, we don't think that's likely, but to get the additional six years on payroll substantial among revenue of $33,600 per year, they have that guaranteed for the additional six-year term in exchange for that smaller trade-off, seems like a reasonable way to go. The adjustment in the inflation factor is just pretty reasonable based on recent experience, which has been part closer to two and a half percent than before.
Is there still room up there for other providers up there? Or is this going to hinder that a little bit?
I believe there is, but I cannot answer that independently.
So this is a guaranteed?
For the additional six-year term running out until, what's the new expiration date?
Twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, so they can't walk away?
No.
Okay.
Well, there were notes in the package concerning protection against them coming back to renegotiate further?
Yeah, those protections are basically involved if we were to sell a water tower for some reason or things like that, AT&amp;T were to get sold. Then there's no one who knows, but all of those things seem pretty important.
And their only bargaining chip was to extend the lease to work out better terms?
That was the trade-off.
Okay. And there, nothing, nowhere in the agreement prohibits other providers on that tower or competition, okay?
Not yet, thank you.
Any other comments? Question? Can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitless?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Destin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the purchase of an articulated wheel loader from Frederickson Supply. The Department of Public Works has budgeted to purchase an articulated wheel loader through the motor pool. The selected machine will increase capabilities and efficiencies when used for cleaning debris from the beaches, loading salt, stump grinding, trash haul, leaf collection, forestry work, et cetera. Bowing a demonstration and quote process, the department recommends the Wacker Newsen loader for the advantages it provides. Is there a motion to approve the purchase?
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Councilmember Whitless, supported by Councilmember Cody, to approve the purchase. Is there any further discussions or questions?
Yes. I understand that they tested out several units of this, but I see they're only recommending one. Historically, I always thought that we had several options on the price and which one we'd approve. And this one, we just have one. I'd like to have a little bit more explanation on that, if I could, please?
Mr. McCullough, if you would.
Sure. The, this particular piece of equipment, there's actually four or five different manufacturers that make a very similar piece of equipment. We looked at each of those, looked through the specifications, the options that were available, and two things stood out about this machine that were not available with the other machines that we looked at. And the first one is all the attachments that go on this machine, including the bucket, the gravel rake, the stump grinder, fit, they all use a universal attachment that would fit onto our Skidster. And conversely, every attachment that we currently own for our Skidster will fit on this new machine. So, there was only, I believe, one other machine that had that ability as well. And so, that prevents us from purchasing attachments that can't be used with other machines when we replace them. So, the universal attachment was very important to us. The other thing that this machine had that none of the other machines had was high-flow hydraulic system. And in this particular machine size, none of the other manufacturers provide the high-flow, they're all low-flow. The high-flow, we believe, will double our efficiency in two different ways. One, in our stump grinding, and two, with the snowblowing that we have, will make it much more effective and make the machine more efficient. And so, because of that, this machine met the, is the only machine that met the specifications of all of those that we looked at.
Did we buy a stump grinder last year?
We did. And what we're finding is that the Skidster is a low-flow machine, low-flow hydraulics. So, while it works, it takes quite a bit of time to do some of those bigger stumps. So, what we negotiated into this contract is actually trading in that at a pretty good price and then replacing it with a different one that's a higher flow than we matched this machine.
Could you tell me a little bit about why we made one bid?
The, once we selected this particular model, we then looked at others that provided. The Frederickson Supply stands out for two different reasons. One, they've been a longstanding member of the city and were very satisfied with their customer service and their service on the equipment that we buy from them. The second reason is that they offered us government pricing through a program called COPRO. And COPRO was established by counties to purchase equipment that was not available on the state of Michigan's MyDeal program. So, the state of Michigan goes through all of the things that they purchase in a normal year, they go out on competitive bids and they award MyDeal contracts on that. The COPRO is the county version of that for everything that's not available on MyDeal. And Frederickson Supply is the only dealer in Michigan that is authorized to use that COPRO pricing for this particular machine. So, when the county organization went out and bid this to all the vendors, Frederickson had the low bid on that.
This is the low bid, I'm sorry. This is the low bid.
This was the low bid. This is the low bid on the county, on the COPRO program, yes.
I have no question about the capability of the equipment. I've watched a few videos, YouTube videos on how it works and how it fits on sidewalks and its capabilities and its pitfalls. It's really good on gas, they talk about 13 hours on a tank, which is pretty neat. I don't know if I got a good deal or not, because I don't see another, I don't know how much the COPRO saved us. I have no idea because I don't see another bid. And I know there's at least five or six within our area that handles the weather, Lake City, Traverse City, some other ones right around here. It would be easy to get another bid. So, I guess I don't know how much we're saving, if we are saving. I have nothing to compare.
Yeah, we did not solicit prices from the other four vendors that sell this machine because the COPRO had already bid that out and were satisfied with that process.
It's essentially the same as buying from the MyDeal. Correct.
Jeff, do we have a chance to work with this equipment demo?
We did. We, they brought this machine last year and we used it for a couple days, went through the different attachments, and made sure that it worked for our needs, yes.
So, is it the machine that we were snowblowing the sidewalks with?
Well, that's how we started. The machine that we have now is an MB, and it gets used all winter long, snowblowing sidewalks. We have one other attachment for it, which is a broom. And so, several times during the summer, we take it down to the beach and we'll clean off the parking lots and some of the walkways. But it felt like, and that's a hundred thousand dollar machine, we felt like that machine ought to be used more efficiently and more often during the summer months. So, we began exploring attachments like we're talking about tonight for that machine. And what we found out is that machine has to have special attachments, they're custom-made for it, and they're pretty expensive. So, at that point, we actually started exploring trading that machine in to get something that met our needs better and can be used more often and more efficiently. And that's how we came upon the articulated loader concept. The value, the trade-in value of the MB that we have now is about $20,000. And it feels like there's a lot more value left in that machine than $20,000. So, what we're proposing is to keep that machine and give us the ability to have two snow blowers out on the sidewalks when we've got the staff available. And then, have even started talking about possibly working with the fire department to be able to use the machine when we're not using it, so that it'll assist them in digging out the hydrants where now the hand dings out. So, I'm hoping this increases our capability. Sidewalk snowblowing is one of the biggest complaints we hear during the winter because it takes us so long to get through the city.
Well, it's good that we're going to have a backup unit, gives us capabilities to clear the sidewalks. And all the attachments that we currently have will work on this new machine?
All the attachments that we use on our Skidster will work on this.
So, we don't need to buy anymore?
Correct.
Okay.
We have some that are proposing this purchase.
Just back on COPRO for just a minute, we, when we bid on vehicles, we bid off from different dealers and also from Michigan deals. But when we go to buy a piece of equipment, we only get one bid. And for some reason, that just doesn't make any sense to me. And I guess I will apologize for that, it just doesn't make any sense. It would be so easy to get another bid and say, "This is how much we save by going COPRO." Then I would say, "Well, then maybe we ought to look at some of the other things that we buy, if we could buy it that much cheaper through them. Maybe there's some other things we ought to be looking at going through them."
The next agenda item is trucks, and we, we try, and I'll go through that a little bit, but we tried to make the truck purchase exclusively using the MyDeal. We weren't successful, but if we were, we would have gotten prices on that, then likely wouldn't have soft prices beyond that, because those are already competitively bid.
Those are already bid packages, they're just larger contracts that we're tapping into. So, they've already been up the bid just on 10 units instead of one, and we're just tapping into that price.
Will the stump grinder work on the existing machine if we're still going to keep?
It will work on this new machine, but that's the only machine that we have that's got high-flow hydraulics. So, it'll be used just for this machine.
Well, the existing stump grinder we have, yeah, I mean, if we trade that in, would it be usable on our existing equipment?
The stump grinder that we would trade in would be usable on the Skidster, that's the machine that it was bought for.
Okay, so, we would lose a backup capability by trading that?
Correct.
Backup on stump grinding is critical as a backup on snowblowing sidewalks. If you're down for a month on stump grinding, it's a little inconvenience, but it's not a real inconvenience.
We, in doing the math, we've paid for that stump grinder just in one year's usage versus contracting that out as we did in the past, and that's how and why we purchased that. But we believe that we can double our capacity again by going with the high-flow.
Any other questions? Thanks. Michelle, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Destin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
I'll put this down next, I'd like to see more of it. Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
No.
Councilmember Whitless?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration the purchase of two pickup trucks for Manseey Ford. The motor pool maintains a database of equipment age, condition, and anticipated replacement. This year's budget includes the purchase of two pickup trucks for the Department of Public Works, including a three-quarter ton and one-ton truck. Bids were solicited through local vendors in the state of Michigan MyDeal program. Manseey Ford submitted the low bids for both trucks, a Ford F-250 for $26,085.38, and a Ford F-350 for $26,968.38. The low bids for Manseey Ford are recommended. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, before a motion, perhaps some additional explanation on that truck acquisition?
Tonight, I put before you some additional information. When we went through this process, we started off with the MyDeal process. And in trucks, each of the manufacturers has a MyDeal price that's been approved in a contract. So, Dodge can sell a truck, Chevy can sell a truck, Ford can sell a truck, and so, we started at that point. The Ford trucks were the less expensive on the MyDeal process, but they don't contain some of the equipment that we require for our usage. So, we contacted Gornell Ford, which is down in the Detroit metro area, and asked them to provide us pricing to add several things like a tow package, a plow package, and a couple other small items. And that's normally what we do with all the trucks that we've purchased. They were very appreciative at the request, and we never got a price from them. We tried half a dozen times to recontact them, emailing them, phone calls, and could not get them to price the trucks back out to us. So, at that point, we decided to bid it locally, and we went to three dealerships in Manseey to solicit competitive pricings on each of those. Manseey Chevrolet informed me that they really don't have at this time a government purchasing program, and so, their truck purchases or truck quotes are not very competitive. Watson's also gave us a price, and Manseey Ford gave us a price. And so, when we submitted this to, for the council agenda, we submitted it based on the local pricing because we couldn't get anything out of MyDeal. Councilman Zelinski, after getting his packet, remembered a gentleman that he worked with through MyDeal to purchase Ford vehicles, passed along that information, and when we contacted him, found out that Signature Ford started with the MyDeal contract on October 1st, which is the state's fiscal year. So, Gornell Ford that we couldn't get any information from had it till September 30th, Signature Ford started again on September 1st. So, before you, I have pricing from Signature Ford to compare to the Manseey Ford prices. The, they've got, Ford's got some sort of crazy deal right now where Ford F-350s on the government purchase are very close in dollars to the 250. But if you look at the F-250 that we were looking at, Manseey Ford submitted a price of $26,085.38. Signature Ford submitted a lower price of $25,532. So, it's roughly a $500 difference on those. On the F-350, Manseey Ford submitted a price of $26,953.38, and Signature Ford was to win $20 at $26,935.
So, I think the recommendation stays the same, to buy local, but feel that we can save $500 if you bought a Ford under the MyDeal.
I have a question. It was brought to my attention that there's only about $800, maybe $860 or $70 difference between, for local, between the one-ton and three-quarter ton. Is the three-quarter ton serving a special purpose, and why would we not go to a one-ton?
Well, the, there's a, there's a big difference in engine sizes and suspension when you get into those trucks. The one-ton, we specifically would like to use to pull our tow patcher and during the wintertime to put our slump box in it that we use for doing sidewalks. Right now, we're sitting in a 250, and it's very hard on the transmission and the suspension. The F-250 that we're, that we're proposing really doesn't need to have that, to be that heavy-duty. So, even though it's, they're pretty close in price today, I believe that in the long term, when we have to start repairing and replacing a lot of those parts and the fuel consumption, probably costs us more maintenance and wear and tear in the long term.
I understand, I just, it's all close in price, I didn't know if they-
It's surprising how close they are at this point, yeah.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase, ma'am?
I'll make that motion to approve the purchase of F-250 and F-350 from Manseey Ford. Second?
Have a motion by Councilmember Whitless, supported by Councilmember Zelinski, to approve the bids. Is there any other further discussions or questions?
Just basically a different price difference between the two companies of $521. It's nice to keep the business local.
I agree with that, buy local.
Also, we'd pay three people to drive down and pick them up.
Yeah. Not the price to put them on there and come back here.
We confirm that the Signature Ford would be delivered to Manseey. The Gornell, the Gornell price was $2 a mile.
Any other comments or questions?
I would just say, I'm in agreement that with the difference, local purchase would be more desirable, but I like the fact that we do have the MyDeal price in there, in a sense of competition to see what the differences are.
Anything else? Michelle, can you please take the roll?
Mayor Potem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitless?
Yes.
Councilmember Destin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to board and commissions, the city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the compensation commission, downtown development authority, harbor commission, PEG commission, plan commission, and the zoning board of appeals. All appointments by the mayor are subject to council's approval unless otherwise specified by statute or ordinance. Nominations for council appointments do not require second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, council shall vote on the nomination, a majority vote in favor of placement of nominee is required for appointment. Before we move on to the nominations, I would like to have a discussion amongst council. We have a council member who has applied for a couple of these open positions and speaking with them. He wants to help out these boards who are short members. I know in the past, I've received a couple questions where we've had council members serving on various boards and wondering if that was a conflict of interest. And I know at the beginning of the year, the council year, we appoint certain council members to certain boards and commissions, others we don't appoint to. And I just want to have like a brief discussion and get council's input and how they feel about appointing city council to various boards and commissions, and if they see any.
Well, I understand on the harbor commission, there are sitting council members already on that, but the PEG commission does not have a council member. Is that true?
I understand, yeah.
George, is there a conflict, concern?
No, I, Mayor Potem Smith, there would not be, I mean, as municipal attorneys, our concern always is, is whether there's an incompatibility of office by statute. And appointment of a council member to the committees that we're talking about, it does not constitute an incompatible office. And so, the only other restriction would be whether there's a restriction in the ordinance or the bylaws of the various committees. And I don't believe there is.
I believe the PEG commission has it in the ordinance that a council member can be appointed.
Wasn't L.L. Marshall?
He was.
For a long time?
I believe he was.
He was, when he was council member and his county commissioner.
And I think, and I'll say, as I shared with the mayor, the intent of applying for these is that there are long-term vacancies on these committees. I have the time and the interest in those to apply for those and help the committees or commissions in the future. So, it wasn't any intent to try and monopolize any real estate or it's a plant, citizens that would like to apply, just merely an intent to apply to help the commission function.
I have a couple comments about that. Obviously, the, one of the benefits of having some of the, the council sit on commissions where there's not a direct conflict, it creates kind of a conduit between council and some of those boards and commissions. And I do agree that we've been struggling filling some of those roles. The other thing is, it creates some collaboration at both the council and commission level. The third thing is, and I feel this is probably one of the most important things, is some of those councils and commissions and authorities that we have often still come to the council for final approval. So, even if one council member sits on a board or a commission, I believe if there was a direct conflict or something that the rest of the council didn't feel was in the best interest of the city, they would have the ability to, you know, strike that down or deny that approval. And that helps some of the balance there. I commend, you know, Mayor Protem Smith for getting involved in those. I do know that I, that I was, we were concerned and I appreciate the mayor bringing that up because we don't want to create those conflicts on those commissions, but it is hard to get those filled and having competent people on those is, is, is good, good to have. So those are the three pieces that I think are relevant in this discussion.
Does anyone else have any other comments as far as appointing sitting council members to various boards and commissions?
I have no problem with it.
And then getting back, do we need to like review, like for the PEG Commission, should there be a council appointment at the beginning of each council year? You know, different things. Should we have a review of these different commissions and look what makes sense as far as what we should be appointing to?
Yeah, I agree. Just because it might not be in the bylaws doesn't mean it doesn't make not, make sense or it doesn't make sense. So I agree, if we have an evaluation of at least those kind of bylaws within ourselves and within those commissions, I think that's wise to, to make sure.
There's an annual review of that process and I can ask the city clerk to make a note and make sure that isn't forgotten.
Okay. Appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure that we had some transparency, having a Mayor Protem Smith apply for two different open vacancies, that there isn't any question by the community is making it look like we're trying to infiltrate all these different boards and commissions and have more, a one-sided thought process going on versus getting community involvement.
It is, it is nice to have. I, myself, I serve on the Planning Commission and it is nice to have that view to help the Planning Commission and, and take their views and bring them to, to council. So I think it's a win-win.
I served on the Harbor Commission and the Parks Commission at the same time. I'm not on the Parks Commission, all the time expired. I figured if they have any new ideas, so it's time to kind of move on, let the whales ride.
And as Mayor Protem Smith brought up, he is applying for the Harbor Commission. We already have two sitting staff members and a council member. Does council see, foresee any kind of issue?
I see an issue there. If we already have a council member in the Harbor Commission.
I am on the-
And then two staff?
Yeah. I think that's, we're, we're running again.
So we just need to, while council as a whole does not have an issue with applying for open positions, we just need to be constant of how many council members are already serving? Is that what I'm hearing?
Right.
Okay. Well, I appreciate everybody's input, I just want to make sure we're transparent and open and just take a, an open review of our boards and commissions, especially in light of having trouble finding people to sit on these boards and commissions. And I follow with council member Gustin's comments and having Mayor Protem step up and help fill some of these empty spots. So unless there's any other comments?
I guess your comment I got is, it's great that we're, we're going ahead and I can never miss a split on that, but at the same time, I wish the citizens would also have some interest in getting on these commissions now.
And that's something else, maybe we need to maybe put in the paper, maybe put a homepage on what these boards and commissions do, the importance of it, what role they play, and what time of, time commitment that it's requiring of people be on these.
All those details are on our website.
And I looked at those and unfortunately, I think people want a quick view, a quick glance, if it's in the paper, they may not want to drill down.
The advertisement, we tried to keep a little bit of an explanation, kind of with the responsibilities, but not the time commitment.
I know, talking to some people that I wanted to see on different boards that the time commitment, or maybe even the time of day that these committees meet is a negative impact on them. So if we have, we have the mayor, if we have the timeframe of, is it an hour, one meeting a month or an hour a month, maybe that will help. Because we definitely need volunteers to be on these boards. If we want to move Manasty ahead in a positive fashion, we really need people on these committees.
Okay. Thank you. And maybe we can get together later and figure out how we can best get that information out there or change up some of these boards and commissions, either the meeting times and dates that would attract more people. All right, having said that, we'll move on to the Compensation Commission. There were three vacancies, terms ending 9/30/17, 9/30/19, and 9/30/20. Applicants must be registered voters in the city and it's a mayor appointment. We had one applicant, Marilyn Rusniski of 266 Sixth Street, and I will make the appointment to the term ending 9/30/20.
I would like to motion support the mayor's appointment of Marilyn Rusniski of 266 Sixth Street.
I'll second that.
Motion by council member Goodspeed, supported by council member Cody, to appoint Marilyn Rusniski of 266 Sixth Street to the Compensation Commission, term ending 9/30/20. Is there any other discussion? Can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Downtown Development Authority, there's one vacancy, it's a four-year term ending 6/30/19. Applicants must have an interest in property in the downtown district. There were no applicants. The Harbor Commission, there are three vacancies, terms ending 3/31/18. This is a council appointment. We had one applicant, James Smith of 353 First Street.
Make a motion to appoint Jim Smith of 353 First Street to the Harbor Commission.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by council member Gustin, supported by council member Cody, to appoint Jim Smith on the Harbor Commission.
Isn't that, nothing against you, Jim, but starting to stack the board here. So don't take offense to my vote, okay?
I agree. I think we have two staff members and a council member already serving on the Harbor Commission. I'd like to see if we can't get more community involvement with that Harbor Commission.
Well, you know, could we make that, I'll like them, councilman Smith to that as an interim and keep that open in case there is somebody else open, open for that since we already have one person on. I just, I'm just-
There's three vacancies.
Yeah, I-
Yeah, that's true too. Who's gonna, all right. Yeah, what's the, what's the thought? Gotcha.
If there is, if the attorney feels there is no conflict, it's a different opinion. That's what we need, is we need ideas.
Yeah, I would agree. If there's nothing that directly prohibits a council member from sitting, or multiple council members from sitting on the Harbor Commission, I wouldn't block or sway a council member from, from being a part of that. If we do review the, the bylaws and it does feel that there's a present conflict of interest, I think that's something that we address, but at this point, I would support Mayor Protem Smith ahead of the Harbor Commission.
Does the Harbor Commission have trouble getting a quorum currently?
No, not usually.
I'd like to see more variation, you know, of more community involvement in that. I do see the point of having more ideas on the committee and being involved. So I don't think it's ideal, I think-
I would like to encourage some voters to be involved, some people who have some boiling experience. It would be great to hear what they have to say.
I would like to see some other people involved, as councilman Cody spoke, in some of these committees. However, you have the choice, we can move forward with three vacancies or we can move forward with two vacancies and wait for people to show some interest and apply for appointment to some of these committees or commissions. So again, my intent was to add to the process, not deny anybody an opportunity. They're long-term vacancies, they're repeatedly advertised, and my intent is to help with the process.
I, and I totally understand and appreciate that. You know, like I said, don't think I'm, this is nothing personal.
I think when we review these boards and commissions, look at these terms, it's a three-year term, that's a long-term commitment, I think, and maybe we need to look at that, see if that makes sense and see if that's what's making people hesitant in joining some of these boards and commissions, are these terms?
What is the meeting criteria? Is it once a month on the Harbor Commission?
Yep. We have suspended some time in the wintertime, but yeah, usually once a month.
And Harbor Commission meets during the-
One o'clock.
That would make it tough. I guess as far as sitting, I mean, you can't sit in the meetings without being aboard and off our ideas, correct? You could go to the meetings.
Yeah.
Please take the roll.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
No.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
PEG Commission, three vacancies, one term ending 12/31/17, and two unexpired terms, 12/31/15. Applicants must be Manassas County residents. Council appointment, Jim Smith of 353 First Street.
I'd like to appoint Jim W. Smith to the PEG Commission ending 12/31/17.
Second.
I have a motion by council member Goodspeed, supported by council member Zelinski, to appoint Jim Smith to the PEG Commission, one term ending 12/31/17. Any further discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Planning Commission, there's one vacancy, a three-year term ending 10/31/18. Applicant must be a city resident, it's a mayor appointment. We had one applicant, Edward Ray Fortier of 367 Eleventh Street. Like to appoint Mr. Fortier to the vacancy, the term ending 10/31/18.
I'd like to make a nomination, support the mayor's appointment of Ray, Edward Ray Fortier.
Second.
I have a motion by council member Goodspeed, supported by Mayor Protem Smith, to appoint Edward Ray Fortier of 367 Eleventh Street to the Planning Commission, term ending 10/31/18. Any discussion? So now, please take the roll.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
And councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, communication, and announcements? I guess we have them. Concerns and comments, citizen comments, are any citizens who would like to comment on tonight's agenda? Other city managers? Yes.
Good evening, mayor, city council. My name is Ed Pegler, my home's at 522 Fifth Avenue. Tonight, though, I'm here representing the Parks Commission and just want, first off, I want to say I think it's great to have city council on the commissions. I do kind of question if there's too many of them, but I guess most commissions could take any help they can get. I want to talk just real quickly and briefly about the toys down at the old Rocket Park. I know there's a lot of communications going on right now, which really kind of surprises me, as much communication as going on about some toys. But I want, first off, I want to make the Parks Commission's view on that perfectly clear. Every member of the Parks Commission now wants those toys to remain down where they're at. So I don't want any confusion on that because I know there's things going on. A lot of the Parks Commission wants to sell Rocket and this, that, and the other thing. So let me just back up briefly, the reason that that was even thought of selling the Rocket is originally, all the way back when we first started talking with the previous city manager about the grants for the new Rocket Park, it was under the understanding it was going to replace the old Rocket Park. The new Rocket Park was going to go in, all the old stuff was going to be torn out, and it was going to be a replacement. So when that was discussed, it was like, well, we don't want to destroy that rocket. We actually think that rocket has more value than just scrap. I mean, they sell all kinds of things on Christ's list, so we figured, you know, let's try to sell the rocket before we just go ahead and scrap it. When the location of the rocket moved north to where it's at now, there was never really any discussions about leaving the toys there or the toys remaining there. It just kind of got lost in the shuffle. Well, now that we see that the toys are not interrupted, like I said, it's our stance, we want those toys to remain there. We've had a member now that has been working on the toys for the last couple of weeks along the volunteers, sanding, scraping, painting. I just went down there before I came here, they all look really nice, there's more work to be done, but they look real nice. I'm going to give you a half a dozen real quick reasons why the toys should remain there. First off, like I said, the toys have been cleaned up, they've been painted, and more than anything else is they're all in good shape. There's really no toys out there that are in bad shape. There was one spot on the rocket, that spot has been fixed, there's no problems with that rocket. The second thing is, is when we were discussing what to do with those toys, it was brought up, now we sell rocket, try to move some of the toys to another park. It's the consensus of the members of the commission now that if we try to move those toys, they're just going to be destroyed and we're not going to have anything. Most of them are cemented in, most of them are, there's nine that are made out of galvanized metal, there's a couple of plastic and there's a wooden. They're all cemented in, if we try to pull them out, we're just going to destroy them and we're not going to have anything. Another thing is, is it never really stood out, but the new Rocket Park seems to be geared a little bit more toward the real younger kids, the smaller kids. There's not anything for really the 11, 10, 11, 12-year-old kids, which the old Rocket Park has toys that supplies that need, so we should leave them in there. The second thing is, or the, the next thing is, is it was brought up to us by citizens talking to me and other members of the commission that there's a lot of times, there's activities going on in that gazebo down there or the big pavilion, different from this and that, gives the parents or the babysitters an opportunity to enjoy the concert at the gazebo or something going on in the pavilion, and their kids can play right there. They're not all the way far north over by the circle where they can't keep an eye on them. So we have had citizens express that concern to us. The second, or the next thing is, is Lighthouse Park. The fact that Lighthouse Park has been, you know, closed down and we don't know what the status of that is, but we do know that it's unusable, it doesn't make sense to go ahead and haul another 12 toys out of a park and decrease the amount of activities even more. And the next thing is, is we've not had one single person from up to me or any other member and say, I'm glad to see you guys getting them toys out of there, I'm on, I'm on it. The consensus is, the people that talk to us, man, I played with that toy when I was a kid. Or my grandkids are playing with that now and I used to play with it. So we don't have a formal recommendation, our last meeting was a bus tour, that was a come up in the discussion. Every single person felt the same way. Thursday, October 15th, we will make a formal recommendation to city council that we would like to see those toys stay there. So all I can say now is, the reason I'm coming up here now is because I didn't want to wait till the meeting and see the wrecking ball going down First, First Street on its way down here to tear things out. We want to see them stay. And we'll do whatever we have to do to keep them in good shape and hope that you guys agree with us and tell whoever needs to be told to, you know, back off and, and leave them there. Thank you.
Thanks. So anyone else who'd like to comment? So now we'll move to Fish and Seth.
I have one item, Your Honor. We have been able to contact one of the two additional applicants for the city manager's position and have scheduled an interview with him for five o'clock on Monday, the 12th. We are continuing to try and get ahold of the second candidate and if we're successful, he would be scheduled for 6:30 on the same day. So there will be a notice of that special meeting for Monday at 5:00 coming out tomorrow along with the resume of the applicant, will be public along with his name and the agenda information, probably tomorrow afternoon.
The attorney?
Public safety director?
EPW.
Couple things for you. One, the painting of the mainwood water tank is about 99% complete. Our consulting engineering firm Dixon performed a punchless inspection today, just a few minor spots that need touch up. So today we began filling the bottom stem- So today, we began filling the bottom stem in the lower portion of the bowl to begin the disinfection process. We'll have staff come in starting at 4:00 this morning, and they will fill the rest of that tower up, which will begin the full disinfection process for the tower. Samples will be pulled on Thursday and Friday. We have to have two passing samples 24 hours apart to make sure that the tank is 100% clean. So in the event that those samples pass like we expect them to, then we would look at putting that water tower back in service on Monday.
Run the samples down to one community?
Yes. So that they're light.
Yeah, you did a good job.
The second notification is that we're in full road construction right now. Milling occurred on Third Street and Ninth Street and St. Mary's Parkway today. The mill will continue tomorrow morning in the neighborhood of Elm, Locust, and Cedar, between 8th and Ninth Street tomorrow. And they will be pouring curb and gutter, planning for tomorrow afternoon on the one block of Third Street and one block of Ninth Street, and then expect to have paving, the pavers in town, and on Thursday, Friday, and hope to be wrapped up with everything but final restoration by weekend.
Just freely, in response to Mr. Tegler's comments on, is there any plans for any immediate dismantling of old?
I don't have any issues with old law. As I indicated in the email to council this afternoon, worst case would be a work session on the subject, but tonight we got more information than I had this afternoon, so we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Engineer?
How do you, Your Honor?
Councilmember Cody?
Yes. Here about a month ago or so, council took action on the fireworks ordinance, and I'm a little confused, and what I would like to have, could, Mayor, like to revisit that in a workshop to re-discuss it, if I could?
I would like to too. I was a bit confused as to the decision that was, I was gone in business that week that council voted on that, so I wouldn't mind having another discussion.
A work session or a regular agenda, you could have, on an agenda, you could have a session for reconsideration, so if we come up for formal discussion, if you want that, or we could just take it to a work session, as you prefer.
Do we have time to do like an ad hoc committee and involve some of the community in a recommendation to the council?
That would add at least 30, 60 days to the process, but we certainly could.
I'd rather not do it ad hoc, I'd rather just discuss it.
I thought we'd just go right into a workshop, because we're the ones that initially discussed it all, and thought everybody was on the same page, and it came out differently, and I would just like to revisit, and maybe it'll stay just the way it is. I don't know. But I mean, before we get carried away, let's just, let's discuss that at a workshop first. And if we need to venture out, then let's do it at that time.
A work session? A work session is what you?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any else concerned?
No, not at this time.
That's my response.
Nothing, thank you.
That's my question.
I vote we save the rocket. It's all I have.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
I would like to thank Ben for his continued diligence and assistance as we continue the process to look for a full-time city manager. I'd also like to thank the Public Safety Department for the diligence in tracking the burglars and the rash of activities that we've had. I was pleasantly surprised Saturday morning when I was leaving the house at 5:00 to see one of our police officers on foot walking the streets, trying to provide an extra level of diligence, and that's most appreciated. Good, thank you.
Councilmember Woodland?
Just have a couple things. Next Tuesday, I will not be here for the work session, and I do have a question for Mr. Patrick Kaye on the River Park progress, River Park condos.
There's not much to report there from, I spoke with T. F. Tachias about it, and the last thing that I've heard on there is, last thing I've heard on there is they have gotten to the first major hurdle in their blank elimination grant from the state. From talking to T., there's roughly about 8% to the approval. Hopefully, he said within the next two or three weeks, they should know if they've got that blank elimination grant from the state. Once they have the blank elimination grant, they can start moving forward, and there's potentially a tenant, a commercial tenant for this state.
So are we going to see progress maybe this year yet?
Yeah. From talking to T., based on the approvals, it's still going to happen, and I think there's an agreement, so from the city, it still needs to be completed before everything happens. I believe there's a ground for, or a statement that has to be signed and created first. He will say in the spring of next year.
I have something to tell everybody that asked about, so thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Goodstead?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Ed Tegler and the Parks Commission for their work at Rocket Park. I'm, same mind of Councilmember Goodspeed, save the rocket if we can't. Kind of near and dear to my heart, that's where I grew up, playing on that as well. Also, I wanted to thank Jeff and the team, the Maywood Tower does look good. I, you know, was worried about losing the sunburst, but the upgrade looks real good. And control construction, it's great to see some improvements going there, so I commend you and your team for that as well. And also, Chief Bachman, the efforts for trying to catch our folks out there breaking and entering, that's, you know, commending you and your team. So stay on it, and I know we'll prevail, so thank you for your efforts. That's all.
I'd just like to thank council for their input on the boards and commissions. I'd really like to hear everyone's point of view on that, and I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Smith for stepping up and sitting in on some of these boards and commissions that we really need bodies and help on. And I also want to thank council for their commitment and time that we're putting in in finding a new city manager. It is a lot of time and a lot of effort in making yourself available, so I'd like to thank them for that. But then I'll take the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.